Welcome all to this November 11th meeting of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors. Before I ask everyone to join us in the pledge, I would like to take a moment to remember the veterans who served this country, have served it since its beginning. And I'd like to call that we always, or that we never forget our veterans and the price that some of them pay to help keep all of us safe and to preserve this democracy here in the United States. But let us also always remember the forever need to seek wise and peaceful solutions over military battles. I'd like to take a moment of silence to honor our veterans, and then I'll ask everyone to join us in the pledge. Now, those who are able, please stand and join in saying "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, I'd like to open up the floor to anyone who has an item to bring before the Board of Supervisors that is not already on the agenda for tonight's program. And I'll remind viewers that there are multiple ways of contacting the township, and they should be listed up front here.
Nothing on the email.
So, seeing nothing on the email, so seeing no comments, we'll go on to presentations, the one item of which is the proposed budget for 2021 for Patent Township. I'll let Doug set it up, and then we go to our Director of Finance and Administration, Larry Paper, who will present a program. Then it goes to the Board for questions and discussions, and then we propose it to adopt it if we so see. And we will then do follow-up with a public hearing on November 18th. And then, if all goes well, we will be adopting the budget on December 9th. So Doug, you want to set this up for us?
Sure. You have before you today the 2021, or the proposed 2021 Township budget. It comes in two pieces, basically. There's a small document we call the Little Budget, or actually, the Budget, which is, provides a summary of each major area of the township's revenues and expenses. And then, as a companion document, there is a very large, 168 pages or something along those lines.
236.
Might have grown.
Yeah.
That covers all the line items. We call that the Line Item Detail, or LID. You see it abbreviated. With that, that's the work that Larry's done over the last year. We started with a review of last year. Larry did, we did a financial trends analysis back at the beginning of the summer. He saw the capital improvement plan here about a month ago. And tonight, all that work accumulates in the 2021 proposed budget. With that, I will turn it over to Larry, who provides, got a little slideshow for you.
Yeah, I do. So, tonight, as Doug said, we're going to look at the tentative budget and do a tentative approval of it. Next Wednesday, we will have a public hearing at the Work Session on the budget. Then the budget has to be, well, it will be advertised this week, and then it has to be available for public inspection for 20 days, which will take us to the beginning of December. If we don't have any changes, then we can adopt it on December 9th. If there are any significant changes, which equal a 10% change, increase in the budget, or a 25% increase in any single category of the budget, then we would have to re-advertise the budget for another 20 days. So that gives, doing the budget today gives us time in case we have any changes that need to be made. So just a review of 2020's projects and accomplishments. So, our projected results were, we projected $15.3 million in revenue. We're coming in around 13.9. We have an increase in revenues of $1.4 million. And most of that is due to the PIB loan that we hadn't budgeted for last year, that we got the $1,700, $1,800 PIB loan. The expenditures are projected to be $16.1 million. The budget was $14.9 million. That's an increase in projected expenditures of $1.2 million, which again, is mostly due to the PIB loan we're going to pay out for the Burnell Road, Fox Hill Road intersection. Our highlights for 2020 were we bought, we replaced two patrol vehicles in the police department with SUVs. We replaced a 30,000 gross vehicle weight dump truck. We completed Phase 1 of Gray's Wood Park. We completed the Valley Vista Drive bike path. We're close to completing the Valley Vista Drive bike path. And the road projects we did with Gray's Woods Boulevard and Valley Vista Drive. Our 2021 proposed real estate tax rates, there's no changes in any of our rates in this budget. We're maintaining the 8.9 mils for real estate, and six tenths of a mil for open space preservation that has been in since 2016. The earned income tax of a half a percent, the local services tax of $52, and the real estate transfer tax of a half a percent in the earned income tax. The LST and the real estate transfer tax are all at the maximum that we're allowed to charge. So this shows our tax rates going back to 2004, where you'll see that in 2016, we added the six tenths of a mil for the purchase of open space preservation of $3.5 million. So we're paying off the debt with the six tenths of a mil, and it's remained that way since 2016. This graph shows the difference between inflation and our real estate tax change. And as you can see, inflation continues to go up, but our real estate taxes maintain a level of mine, so. Okay, so this is the 2021 budget for revenues. We're budgeting $13.4 million in revenues, of which real estate taxes are $4.4 million, open space is about $297,000, earned income tax is $2.4, other taxes are $959,000, intergovernmental payments are $2.2 million, $2.3. Pass-through grants, these are the grants for the Equine Hospital and the Nindy Valley Sports Complex, okay, that we're going to, that we're sponsoring. And so the money's just going to come in and go out, basically. It's $2.16 million, and the non-tax sources is $855,000. So just to drill down on the non-tax revenues, the $855,000, the assessments are $118,000, licenses and permits are $334,000, fines are $59,000, interest is $5, which is a little lower because interest rates have gone down, departmental earnings is $55,000, Penn State fees in lieu of taxes is level at $46,000, rental income is level at $38,000, miscellaneous is $199,000, and part of that is actually the Happy Valley Visitor Bureau's money that, okay, that comes in. Okay, so this shows that real estate taxes are a third of our total income, 33%, and then you have earned income tax at 18%, and you have intergovernmental payments at 17% and pass-through grants at 16%. And the other ones are all under 10. So expenditures are, is close to $15 million in expenditures that we're budgeting, general government services. And I will say that a lot of these individual groupings are actually less than what we budgeted in 2020. But, because we cut some costs due to COVID, and I don't expect them to go up as high as they were. So general government services of $1.4 million, police is $3.3 million, the public works is $4.6 million, community service at Parks and Rec is $1.4 million, community service other, which is health and some colleague items, $1.1 million. This is the pass-through grants of $2.1 million that we talked about before, the Equine Hospital and the Nindy Valley Sports Complex, and debt service of $578, and the debt service on the open space of $245,000. So the breakdown here is, you could see that the big number on here is public works of 31% and police of 23%, the general government and planning is about 10%. So with the budget, the revenues of $13.4 and expenditures of 14, or close to $15 million, we're going to use $1.5 million of funds, almost $1.6. And our year-end cash balance will be about $1.1 million, and that equals just under the amount that we're targeting. Where we usually target about 8 to 12%, it's going to come in at 7.34% of operating expenditures. This is our mileage allocation, which there's no change in. We're still going to have $6.2 mils in general and $1.2 mils in debt, and six tenths of a mil of open space, four tenths of a mil for library, seven tenths of a mil for park capital improvements, and four tenths of a mil for fire. The 2021 budget includes a 1.7% COLA for non-uniform employees. It was 2.4% in 2020 and 2.2% in 2019. We used the August CPIU with less food and energy to determine that number. Each non-uniform employee is eligible for a 1.25% merit increase on their anniversary date, so that is included in the budget. The police contract runs until the end of 2022, and it has a 3.25% increase. And the employee contributions to healthcare are, non-uniform contributes 12% and uniform contributes 9. In the budget, last year, we made some changes when we signed the police contract. We made some changes to our health insurance. We, you know, created a deductible, and we changed some of the COPays. And the new 2021 rates are actually 1% lower than the 2020 rate. So we actually saved money on healthcare plus. We made some changes to the HRA, and we actually are saving money there too, so. The 2022 assumptions show a 3% combined wage increase and a 3% overall benefit increase for 2022 because we have to look out a little bit further. So tonight, we, I presented the budget, and hopefully, we could adopt the tentative budget. And next week will be the public hearing at the Work Session, and then December 9th will be, hopefully, the final adoption of the CIP in the 2021 budget. And I'll entertain any questions.
Anyone in the audience want to call in or email in? And any of our supervisors? I cannot, oh yes, I can see you. I just got the gallery view. So any questions? We've got Supervisor T., Supervisor Rob. Did Elliot come?
Yeah, he's.
Oh, Elliot's there.
Yep.
There?
No question.
No, just to say superbly done. Very complete and with great explanations for even those of us who don't go to bed reading accounting sheets.
Geez, I can't believe that. I go to bed every night reading it, so.
Of course, who wouldn't?
Yeah, who wouldn't? It's exciting.
Well done. Well done, thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Okay. How can you see, oh, there he is. Elliot, you're on here twice, actually.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Elliot, I can see. Yes, go ahead.
Should we go on?
Go ahead, Elliot.
No, I just, I think there's an excellent job, and I guess during the course of the year, we're just going to really have to see how revenues come in fair with what the planning to do and adjust accordingly.
Yeah, we're going to have to monitor it extra close in 2021 because I expect we're still going to see some remnants from the COVID pandemic falling over into 2021. So we'll monitor it on a much closer basis.
And we can hope for a low snowfall year.
That would be, that would be great. We had one last year, we hope we have one again this year.
Yeah.
I get your drift.
Yeah, we always budget for the average on the snow, and then you do what you have to do.
Right.
Yep.
Still, it would, it would help a little bit this year in particular.
We're starting out the year with a lot of salt in the sheds, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Didn't have to buy much to start.
Didn't have to buy much.
One thing that happens sometimes in these La Niña winters is we wind up with more ice and less snow, but that's not always the case.
Which might increase the budget in our police department. Emergency calls, we can hope that won't happen either. Any other comments or questions? Any other kudos? Do well deserve. Oh, Pam, sorry about that. Yes.
Excellent, excellent report. Thank you. And it's been interesting reviewing it. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
So you should get a motion to tentative, or adopt the tentative budget.
Right. So my understanding is that we make a motion to follow the recommendation of the manager whose presentation of this budget expresses his recommendation, and so we'll look after his tentative budget.
Mr.?
So moved? And is there a so seconded?
Yep.
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay, great. So, further comments? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. So thank you again, Larry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this brings us actually to the police update. But before I turn it over to Chief Jolly, I'd like to, I forgot some, a very special part of my words on Veterans Day, which is to give special thanks to any veterans in the room or in the viewing audience, and especially to Pamela Robb, who is one of our sitting supervisors, who is a veteran. Thank you for your service, and thank you to anyone in the audience for your service also. Sorry for leaving it out initially. So we're turning it over to Chief Jolly, who will give us an update on police activities.
Thank you very much. First, I wanted to discuss quickly, Doug did a press release. We did have two employees that tested positive for COVID. We did have two employees that tested positive for COVID. I just wanted to look into that those individuals are, have been quarantined and are recovering nicely. They both pretty much now have beat all the symptoms. They've had some mild symptoms, but hopefully they have the quarantine process here, will come back to work in about a week or so. So just want to give you an update on that, that they are doing well. For the month of October, we did ninety-seven traffic stops, twenty-two citations, one parking ticket, and had twenty criminal arrests. Our bike drove off on three miles, handled an incident, and did seventy-two business checks. Some of their department notes, a twenty-two-year-old male found trespassing in one of the parts. The officer smelled marijuana coming from the vehicle, and they made contact with them. They initiated a search of the vehicle, and that search yielded about two and a half grams of marijuana, some paraphernalia, and multiple edible marijuana products. Very similarly, there was a nineteen-year-old female and a twenty-year-old female arrested for permissioning small amount marijuana and paraphernalia, and officer again making contact with their vehicle, detecting the odor of marijuana coming from the vehicle, and as a result of the search, found about three grams of marijuana and some drunk paraphernalia. We had a twenty-six-year-old male who was arrested for criminal mischief at one of our local parking lots. The male was observed on the parking lot, videos of him, that's keen, in the vehicle. It was parked. The male caused about seventeen hundred dollars worth of damage. We had a twenty-two-year-old male who was arrested for about two thousand seven hundred dollars in cash from a register at a local merchant here in the township. He was an employee of that store. Three individuals were arrested for retail theft, four for false IDs, and two for DUI in the month of October. And our officers successfully served three of the traffic warrants that they attempted to serve six in the month of October. Happy to report that in the month of October, our officers did not have to use force on any of the incidents, and by using force, I mean nothing more than compliant handcuffing. Obviously, there were many forced handcuff folks, but we didn't use any kind of force beyond handcuffing for, to make an arrest. Community relations, officers again busy with the school zones. Our schools here in State College are still in session, so we've been busy making sure that the students are getting to and coming to school safely. Officer Tuskovich participated in Run High Plate Grill, actually assisted him as well at Braze Woods Elementary School. He also spoke to eighth-grade academic literacy class at Park Forest Middle School about some unsolved mysteries here in Center County. And he spoke with the Cub Scout Pack at the Good Shepherd Church in general about law enforcement, and spoke about his uniforms and the equipment he has, and also shared a patrol video for them to look at. So the training and department activities in October, our officers attended tactical response team training. Officer Schaefer attended a wiretap training. Officer Fanocchio and Detective Federenko went to a desert snow training, which is a drug interdiction, interdiction training. I attended an explicit bias training, which was put on by the Heritage Affairs Unit. We had multiple mental health task force meetings. We actually wrapped up our initial work, just put forth our recommendations to the State College of Borough and to the Center County Commissioner, who's actually had a meeting yesterday. So we're kind of passing the ball now to them to look into the recommendations that we made, and whether it's twenty-one of them to decide how to move forward with that. Also a member of the task force for Bloomington Communities of Color. We had two meetings in October. I attended the Center County Radio Advisory Board meeting, Center County Chiefs meeting, Campus Community Unity meeting, and the Patent Township Business Association meeting. So I had a busy, busy month of meetings. Our agency is really happy to, and we're pleased to announce the appointment of Brian Staley to the position of police officer as a result of our hiring process. Officer Staley was hired October fifth and was officially sworn in on October twelfth by the judge in claim. He is just about completing his first month of field training, so at some point here, I'll have him back to three eleven, and I'll make sure that we bring him before the board so we can introduce him properly to you on that night. Just a few notes that we received. First one is in regards to Officer McRath, happened in the right place at the right time, would be able to help. A woman who had locked her keys in a litter van, the owner of the company was very pleased to, he was there, was able to help his employee get it to the van. Officer Tuskovich received a thanking note from the school. I really liked the line in here toward the end, nothing short of outstanding resource for us at Park Forest Middle School, so just really pleased to hear how well things are from him at the school. And just a general note that we received from an individual, and then also a note that we received from the Cub Scout Pack, where Officer Tuskovich had done the presentation for them. Our call list for the month of October, we had four hundred and one total calls. That's up from three hundred and eighty-six in September. The most frequent calls for service were traffic incidents, and then also called closely by Health and Safety EMS assist. To break down our mask ordinance enforcement COVID-type calls, we had six for individuals not wearing masks, two for gatherings, and one establishment, we reported that they were over fifty percent of their capacity. The one mask not wearing, the mask we wanted to kind of highlight, happened at a business where employees confronted a customer, asked them to put a mask on. Customer became upset and became disorderly and actually smashed property. That individual was arrested for criminal mischief and for disorderly conduct as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to do an update on Chick-fil-A. We're still working on the traffic issues. About a little over a week ago, PennDOT did post no left turn into, into the parking lot. So our officers have been out there the last few days, trying to educate folks. We've been sitting in the middle of the road with our lights on, just making sure that they see us there and they realize that the signs are there, and people are kind of conditioned to making that turn. So we're trying to do the best we can to educate them. We had officers out there today stopping cars in the rain to make sure that they knew that those signs are there, and frequently we're hearing that people just don't see them and didn't realize that those had been posted. So we'll continue to try to educate folks another week or two, and then we'll take it from there. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief? I actually have one question. Chief, did you hear any outreach from Starbucks Coffee concerning their traffic pattern?
I know that our officers were dispatched there. I believe it was on a weekend, I think it might have been last weekend, we considered for a traffic concern. Their construction, their hybris there, almost every weekday. I think on the weekends, they don't provide that service. I think during the weekdays, they have folks there directing traffic in the parking lot.
I couldn't quite under...
He said, yeah, you're, you're cutting out a little bit, Tyler. During the week, Starbucks typically has people in the parking lot directing traffic. So they send them around the building and queue up basically in front. On the weekends, especially on Sunday, we haven't seen people out there, and sometimes we see backup. So I think we had officers were called out there Saturday or Sunday, I can't remember what Tyler told me, but we'll continue to monitor it.
I just happened to be there yesterday, or yesterday, and noticed the traffic change. They were circling around the building, and I talked to the assistant manager there and expressed our, our thanks. So it seems like a good solution.
Yeah, it's been less of an issue than Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, on weekends, every, probably about every other weekend, we end up out there for a little bit.
Okay. Well, it seems to be working when they do it.
Mm-hmm.
Great. We next, thank you, chief. We move next to planning and zoning. We have two, two reports, I believe it's two. The first from Richard Schmidt as a rep of the Planning Commission, and then we are going to hear about the, the land development plan for, I guess it's phase two of Burnell Park. So, Mr. Schmidt, welcome.
Yes, I'm going to actually start with that. We actually talked a couple of weeks on November second, and we were in favor of trying to go forward with that. We were told by the person at our Planning Commission meeting, I guess the one thing that they're still trying to secure is some funding from, I believe, DCNR. So that was one thing we're still trying to secure with the grant from them. And then we moved on to discussing about the expansion of the mixed-use overlay to, to the Plain Commercial District. And we, we did move forward to the Board of Supervisors, that, you know, we were comfortable with that. And then following that discussion, we talked about the Patent Township Housing Task Force, and I want to reiterate what I said at my meeting for thanking Supervisor Ties for spearheading the Housing Task Force. We were all in agreement that we felt that it was a very positive step forward, and, you know, we hope that it will bring some direction to our township going forward. Thank you.
Yes. Awesome. Is that it? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, and thank you again to Anita Ties for spearheading that. We are going next to, for, moving to a presentation, I take it, of the phase two of the Burnell Park Road.
Yeah, we'll have Nicole do a little intro, and then we'll have Chuck Stroudowski with YSM, who's our consultant, provide you an overview of the land development plan.
Gotcha.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Hello, everyone. Yes, so phase two A of the Burnell Road Park is the plan that we are discussing. So it is out at the park on Burnell Road. So this plan is looking to develop more of the seventy-four point five acres of the park, and it will include two basketball courts, a fitness area, and it has some additional parking to be added as well, as well as some other amenities that I'm, Chuck will go over with you. And as Richard Schmidt mentioned, the Plan Commission did review it at the last meeting, and they do recommend approval, provided that all of the comments from the staff are exact.
Chuck, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Hey, um, could I let Jan get to share the screen?
No, you're co-host, you can share.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you for allowing me to talk tonight. I'm Chuck Stroudowski of the Landscapes Park Committee. You've been working with the township for a number of years, but most recently on the Burnell Road Park. This plan, this phase two A plan, is preceded by a master plan, an update for the park that you see on the screen. And again, you're all familiar with the development portion of the park, with the playground, the parking, and various things on top of the hill. This phase focuses on some of the facilities down in this lower area. As Nicole mentioned, there's two basketball courts, there is a, oh, there, a young adult fitness area, and a really cool innovative idea of a pump track up in the upper corner. So those were items that were suggested in the master plan and approved back in November of two thousand and sixteen, and then that translated into these phase two A roads. So phase two A installs a large parking area, and then really a complimentary parking area to the main parking area here. I understand, you know, the playground's so loved that this parking area fills up quite a bit, and there was the idea, let's add some supplementary overflow parking for it. So two parking, two basketball courts, there's a small fitness area, and then there is a, kind of, again, a really unique thing. Patent Township tends to really lead the way in trying to push the envelope on innovative ideas. This is a, I'll say it's like a fitness challenge course that is geared toward, a little bit toward like the kids above the playground age, up twelve years and older, and more geared toward teens. So it's a very challenging fitness course, if you will, and I liken it to, if you're familiar with the Ninja Warrior course you see on TV, it's very similar in equipment and style to, again, a competitive kind of track. So, you know, neat idea here, and then, as I said, the pump track, which is an earth and track for, for bicyclists. And to give you a little more of the flavor, again, the two basketball courts, pretty traditional. We did add at one end the idea of a small seat wall, because basketball is just one of those things that, you know, it's a spectator sport. A lot of people tend to gather and watch these games. It just carries the rest. So again, two basketball courts with a small seating area. This is an image, sample image of that fitness course, which, again, very challenging, very strenuous, but, you know, seems to become a trend in the, in the industry, and, you know, again, a really, I think, a nice feature to complement the playground for the park. Pump track, again, similar. These are kind of scaled-down facilities that are, really use the momentum of kids on bicycles to project themselves in and around these courses. So again, very funky, very hilly, challenging. We've actually set it up as two courses. There's a beginner course, smaller course for more inexperienced users, and then there's a larger course with a little more, a little more aggressive for the more experienced players. And the fitness equipment, this was something I think that came out of the successive Circleville Park, where there's, we've installed fitness equipment there. This is similar equipment that's proposed, slightly larger and in an area. So again, encouraging outdoor fitness activity. So that's the bulk of what the plan shows, and I guess I'll leave it out at this point for questions you may have.
Thanks, Chuck.
Looks great. Any comments from board members?
I have a question.
Dan, yeah.
Has the Recreation Advisory Committee reviewed this phase two? Yes, yeah. As, as Rich had mentioned, we, we applied for a grant this year. We were unsuccessful, so we will be applying next year. Also hopeful that maybe there might be some stimulus dollars come forward next year. This would be a good project for that. It's almost shovel-ready. So we've got to finish up the engineering plan, but with the work Chuck's done, we're not that far away from that. So we'll keep our eyes and ears open for that opportunity if it comes, if it comes about.
Great.
And as Nicole said, the Planning Commission did conditionally approve this with completion of items noted on the staff comment letter.
Exciting. Yeah, I can't wait to see the, so we're basically waiting for money to come in.
Yeah, but we do need a motion to vote on the land development plan.
Oh, my oversight, yes. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I'm in the acceptance of this land development plan.
Okay, Dan moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, somebody up there seconded. Somebody, great.
Elliot.
Okay, great.
And a vote.
Oh, yes, thank you. Boy, I'm just really enamored of this plan, if we keep watching it. So those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the plan moves forward, and it's just waiting for a little money. Looks great. Thank you. We are moving now to administration, and we're looking at yet another budget, this one at the COG level. Doug, you want to set this up on, I think it's just...
Sure, the COG general forum took action at their October meeting and forwarded the summary budget to the municipalities for consideration and comments. If you have any comments, we'll send those back to Eric Norenberg, who is with us tonight, or he was earlier. He said he had another meeting. He might be going back and forth. Are you there, Eric? Oh, Eric's there, yeah. And Mr., and Joe Viglione from the Finance Director. So if there are any comments on the COG budget, please bring them forward.
Well, the only thing I'll say is that I certainly spent a lot of time last month going over the COG budget and asking questions with, of Joe and, and the Finance Committee. Since I'm on the Finance Committee, we also reviewed everything. I don't have any further questions or comments. I think it's... I think it's fine with me, the final, the budget as it's been presented.
Well, if any-
Dan, it's obvious to me.
Any other comments?
You're doing a good job on this.
Yeah, thank you, Dan, for your oversight on this. It looks fine to me. I will say, I'm actually, I'm looking forward to the time when we can hire the recording secretary, which I think will take a load off the duty of the staff who head up the individual committees. I think that's a lot of work to do it well. I think it's a good interim solution to have bullet point notes with reference to the video on CNET. Yes. But I agree that it was an appropriate thing to put off. Any other comments? Seeing none?
Okay.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry about that. Sure.
No, I just want to thank Dan for being on the Finance Committee. It really was very helpful in making us understand a lot what was going on. So, Dan, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, but it looks good.
Yeah. And many thanks to, to Joe. Behind the scenes, in the scenes, whatever.
And Eric, and thank you.
Great. Any other kudos? Any other comments? Great, we can move on then. I see that we have no consent agenda. Can we agree on the consent agenda? Not having any, never mind. And then that brings us, of course, to the ever tentilating manager's report. Is that stentilating?
Short, short report tonight. We had information from Pennsylvania Municipal League, PML, including new, new officers that were elected at their virtual summit at the end of October, including our own Amy Farkas, manager of Harris Township in the Center Region. And there were a report from the adopted resolutions from that committee, and then also the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors also provided a summary of their resolutions that had been approved this fall, also in September. So with that, I noticed that there are several items on our township schedule. We're open today. We'll be closed for Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. We are open on the Monday after Thanksgiving, which is often considered a holiday in Pennsylvania. And you can see the rest of the schedule there. I've noticed for household hazardous waste collection, they've been running a lot of public service announcements lately. They're getting out the message that you have to pre-register if you plan to participate in that. And that's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you very much. We're moving on to committee reports, and I'd like to again thank board members and members of the authorities and commissions that we elect from Patent Township for submitting written reports. The speaker excluded, and I apologize again for being behind the eight ball and not getting my report done. So I would like to say that we have enclosed reports from three committees. One is the Climate Action and Adaptation Technical Advisory Committee. The other is the Ad Hoc Facilities, and then Human Resources Committee. Thank you very much for those. There are two committees with meetings whose reports will be presented at the next agenda, and those are Public Services and Environmental, represented by yours truly, who didn't do report, and Public Safety and, it was a joint meeting with Public Safety and the Public Services and Environmental meeting. That met just yesterday, so we wanted another day to write the report. We have also enclosed from, a report from our Spring Creek Watershed Commission and the Center County Airport Authority. So those can be read. I think that addresses all of the committees, authorities, and boards. And brings us to, I guess, item 12, which is adjournment. Anyone care to make a motion? Elliot?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. It's been moved and seconded, so we hereby close. Thank you for attending, everyone.